Committee on Ordinance will now come to order. Madam Clerk, we call the roll.
Counselor Dion?
Here.
Counselor Kilby?
Here.
Counselor Lee?
Here.
Counselor Reposo?
Yep.
Chair of the committee? Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed knowledgeable and permissible. First item on the agenda is an input. Seeing none. Item number two is the proposed ordinance, traffic handicap parking, referred to the committee on February 15th, 2021. We would need a emergency pre-imp.
Motion made.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Dion. Madam Clerk, roll call.
The emergency pre-imp for traffic parking, Counselor Dion?
Yes.
Counselor Kilby?
Yes.
Counselor Lee?
Yes.
Counselor Reposo?
Yes.
Chair of the committee?
Yes. So are there any questions or is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Second. Motion to adopt made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Reposo. Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted, motion carries unanimously. Item number three is the proposed ordinance for traffic miscellaneous. We had, I believe, a stop sign and several handicap signs being removed. Is there a motion for first reading?
Make motion for first reading?
Second. Motion was made by Counselor Dion, seconded by Counselor Reposo. Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted, motion carries. Item number four is a resolution to discuss and review the fines for traffic violation that was submitted by Counselor Pereira and referred to the committee on February 15th, Just read it quickly. Whereas the city council adopted a resolution, oh, I'm sorry, that's not it. I said, uh, four. I'm sorry, I crossed it off. Whereas vehicles parked on Irving Street in violation of the parking ban that was in place due to severe snowstorm caused a serious delay in emergency vehicles responding to a massive multifamily house fire. And whereas the fine for a violation of emergency parking prohibi- prohibited prohibit- can somebody say that word for me? Sorry.
Prohibition?
Thank you. Due to weather conditions, Chapter 70, Section 314 of the Code of Fall River is $40. And whereas many traffic fines have been increased in several years, now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Ordinance and Legislation convened to discuss and review fines for violations of Chapter 70 of the Code of Fall River, which chapter relates to traffic. So, yeah, so after I struggle with the word three or four times on stop.
Okay.
The Director of Traffic and Parking did submit a letter to us essentially saying that she has looked around and reviewed the fines compared to other communities and that we seem to be within a comparable rate of $40 for a parking ban. So I'll open it up to Counselor Lee.
Well, the resolution says to discuss about, you know, discuss this. And what I, one of the things that I was thinking is that even whether or not other communities were increasing or anything like that. I'll try to speak into the mic. Even though other communities may have or do not increase their $40, I don't think that increasing this fine is going to solve the problem that we had at the fire department had that day, the police department had that day during that fire. I believe it's, and even Counselor Pereira, who wrote the resolution, stated it in her in her commentary during the council meeting that it's really about the enforcement of these fines. And that's the reason why we need enforcement is a situation like that where cars are in the way while we were trying to, or while the city was trying to take care of a very serious fire situation. So I don't think increasing it is what we need, but I do, I do feel as though, as with many of the other ordinances that we have, enforcement is one of the biggest problems. So with that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Reposo?
Can I, can we have Mrs. Ferreira come down?
Mm-hmm.
Discuss?
I'll have, Seth, do you want to come down as well, or?
I actually think Ms. Ferreira is the most important speaker.
Okay, that's fine.
I'm glad to come down if the council.
That's fine.
Fantastic.
Hey, Mrs. Ferreira.
Good evening.
I'm just, just curious, as far as the fine is concerned, $40. If we're looking at considerable communities like Fall River, what does that look like for a fine?
As Counselor Kadim said, we're right there with other communities. The only town that's the highest is Somerville, where they're $100. But every other city and town is either 40, 35. Swansea is 20, Somerset's 20, Taunton is 30, New Befford is 50, we're 40. Everett is 25, Cambridge is 40, Brookline is 50, Brockton is 50. So we're like just about where other cities and towns are at.
And in terms of what Counselor Lee was talking about, how many people do we have who go out and give the fines for parking bans?
When a parking ban is established and it has been approved by the mayor and the DCM director, we notify the police department right away. And it's usually special ops as well as the motorcycle unit that will really do a lot of tagging. We can, besides the six parking control offices that we have, so we could have anywhere between 14 to 15 officers out there tagging. And what the police department have is they have sectors where these officers will go. There'll be two officers per vehicle, and they will go to that sector. My PCOs usually go where they normally tag, where they know that it's tight areas, where they know that it's the, it's one ways, and it can be very difficult. So throughout the city, and we tag, that's why we tag always, always before it snows. So we have a, about four to five hours of tagging before the snow really starts. If it's a large storm like we had, we had at least 20 officers. The PCOs will work as long as they can, but police officers have shifts. So when one shift is over, there's another five, six, eight officers that will continue on. And then when it's really into the snowstorm, officers are always there in case we have to tow.
Okay. And I'm just curious, of those tickets that are given, how many of them are paid?
We always try to get as much as we can people to pay. So what we do is when the tickets are entered, we did get, this year, we did get a lot of people that did pay their parking tickets. The ones that don't, we do end up sending them statements. And then a lot of them will end up paying when they have to go to the registry and they can't. So they'll come and see us and pay for those tickets.
Okay. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you. Counselor Dion?
Yeah. I would suggest that in terms especially of the Irving Street fire, I don't think the problem was ticketing. I don't think the problem was enforcement. I think the problem was the vehicles were physically there. Is there anything we can do when a parking ban is instituted and the tagging begins, then within 30 minutes after that, the towing begins and the cars are removed? Because if the cars had been towed and removed, they wouldn't have been in the way, and the fire department would have been able to access the fire and battle it sooner. There are seven sector leaders that work with the CM director. They're the ones that really let us know. For the last storm, well, the one that we got for the 22 inches, we did tow 36 vehicles. And one of the vehicles was towed from Irving. They're the ones that notify us and say, listen, the plows will not be able to get down this road. We need several of these vehicles towed. The problem is, is that when it comes to the towing, it's waiting because you've got to call the next rector in line, the next rector in line. And sometimes you could have four or five cars on one street that need to be towed, and these tow trucks only take one. So it is time consuming, but we do need to do more of that. I think as a city, I know New Befford always towed over 200 cars. Because like us, they have very narrow streets as well. So I think we need to do more of that. Once they've been tagged and the sector leaders go out and they call us, we should. And we know the areas. We know the areas where there's going to be issues. And I just think that they need to be towed. How many entities or established tow vehicles actually are on the list in the city? Because I know they have to do it in rotation. I think there's seven companies, and then they just rotate, rotate, rotate. Right. I know in the past, and I'm going way back, there were hundreds towed every time we had a storm. I can, I can remember working and watching them go whoop, whoop. It was like one after another, after another. And somehow that seems that has fallen off over the years. When we did that, I remember that, we did it with Detective Fagan. And you're right, it's going back at least 20 years. We towed the vehicles to Britland Park. So we were in control of the towing. So we would tow, we had someone watch the cars. So when the people came and get the cars, they already paid the parking ticket. They would not be able to leave without paying the parking ticket. And then we had an agreement with, which is still in ordinance, because I had Detective, I can't think of her name. She just took over Detective Pacheco. She looked up, and it's still in ordinance where we would pay the tow companies like a certain amount of a fee, and all they did all night long was just towing. And then in addition to the ticket, to get to retrieve their vehicles, you also had to pay for the tow and very often pay storage. So, so the ramification of not moving your vehicle was much more severe based on there were three elements that had to be paid. Correct. To me, I think going back to that era and learning from that is probably our best recourse. And we have talked about that. The question is, you know, finding a location to put these vehicles, and it has to be a secured location. And then, of course, having someone watch these vehicles, because you never know when these people are going to go get their vehicles. So that's something that we would have to look into and see where we could put them, come up with, you know, 20 years ago, the fee was a lot less than it is today. Come up with a reasonable fee as well. But I think the main focus would be what location could we come up with that we could, you know, keep these, store these vehicles? I mean, could, could potentially the Ray Street parking lot at Durfee be, be a place that could be done? It is fenced in. They have the ability to lock the gates. Right. But then those vehicles would have to be out of there within a certain amount of time. Correct. Because that parking lot is used for Durfee as well. So it has to be an area where, believe it or not, there are some people don't even pick up their cars. I mean, we tow every day from the city right now. And one of the things that the towing company complains is some of these vehicles, you know, they wait 90 days, and then the towing companies end up keeping these vehicles. Okay. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Lee?
Just thinking out loud, I mean, if we're, if we're going to try to figure out a different way to enforce the situation, maybe, just bouncing off of what was just mentioned, if there is an emergency situation, there could be an increase in the, in the fine, just based on the fact that if it's taking them longer, if it's taking a fire department longer to fight a fire, because based on the situation of the car being in the way, that the owner of that car incurred some of the damages that's occurring, you know, as they're, as they're trying to take care of the property, as they're trying to save the property. You know, I mean, there needs to be some kind of, I think what we're trying to do is connect this dot of when, when there's an emergency situation, if there's property damage, if there's a fire, if people's lives are in danger, and we're waiting, we're waiting on the urgency of this because of a car being in the way. I think there has to be some kind of incurred, you know, punishment or consequence on the person who's, you know, creating that problem. I think, I mean, if that's what we're ultimately trying to accomplish with this resolution, then maybe it's based on those situations, on very, on those situations where if there's an emergency situation, then that's where we have the increase in the fine, or that's where we have, you know, another type of consequence that would hopefully deter somebody from, you know, doing this again. I yield.
Counselor Dion?
Yeah, I think, I think my only response to that would be just by the nature of the fact that you're violating an ordinance, your cars, your vehicle's not supposed to be there, you are going to receive a ticket, should automatically kick everything in. I don't think we should have to wait for an emergency in somebody's house to burn down, for people to learn, there's a parking ban, your car can't be there, don't leave it there. I think right now, it's so easy, and you can wait two weeks and say, okay, here's your $40, it was worth it, because I didn't have to walk, I didn't have to go out of my way, I didn't have to worry about shoveling my car if I didn't feel like it. I think it's just too easy. So again, with that, I yield.
Counselor Kilby? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I guess we're basically, I think the reason for this resolution was to deter. So what, Laura, what's the violation for handicap parking violations?
For handicap?
Yeah. It's 100?
It's 200.
200. Okay. I mean, I, I find that, find that to be a vile, something that when I, when I see something like that, sometimes I'm tempted to go up to the person's, person himself or herself and say, you know, the person's jogging into the credit union or the bank or whatever. So if, if our goal is to create a deterrent, to have people who violate this ordinance to not do it again, then I'm, you know, I'll go with what the committee wants to do, then I think probably the fine should be increased. $40, and a handicap parking violation is 200. And I know we had the perfect storm over there, very narrow streets, emergency apparatus who couldn't make it, get up the street. Thank God it didn't cost any lives or turned into a Notre Dame fire, if everyone remembers that, some of us do. So if we want to deter this type of behavior, I think increasing the fine is probably, would work. So that's my two cents here. I yield.
So I just, I know everybody's spoke. I tend to agree with the, my colleagues here. I think it really does come down to in the enforcement. I also agree with Counselor Kilby. I think if we do bump up the fine a little bit, maybe there's a little bit more emphasis on folks wanting to move as opposed to $40 if it's $100, or even if we go to $200. You know, I just recognize the, the cost associated with that is pretty significant for folks that may not be able to afford that. But on the other hand, you just follow the ordinance, right? The big piece here from, from my standpoint really is, again, going back to the enforcement piece. And unfortunately, the ordinance speaks just to the fines, or the resolution, I should say, speaks just to the fines. But I'm, I'm in agreement with Counselor Dion. I think there needs to be something in ordinance, and maybe it's a different resolution, to really kind of revamp the ordinance that's before us and start saying to, what Ms. Ferreira had mentioned, that within the first hour, we're tagging, we're putting fines. Within two hours of the parking ban, which typically is before the storm actually comes, that the towing operations will, will commence. And that way, you know, you get one car towed, then folks are definitely coming out of their house when they see a tow truck or just the lights on, to really kind of get people to really focus in on, especially the narrowest streets. And unfortunately, we can't create an ordinance to say it's only going, we're only going to tow on narrow streets, it's got to be across the board. So I think to have something in, in place to be able to say, this is the ordinance, this is what we need to do. And I think that, you know, from a political standpoint, and I know overall, this is, we got to recognize we're in a political realm, you know, you have a tendencies where mayors really try not to enforce that because you get a lot of telephone calls, a lot of complaints about where do I park? So if there's something in ordinance, you know, at least it gives them a little bit more of a crush to say, hey, listen, this is an ordinance, I really can't circumvent this, this is what we're saying, what the ordinance says, that we've got to begin, begin the tow operations within two hours of the, of the parking ban. So, so I think it provides some cover for the political aspects of things, and I think we should just really look at it. Because at the end of the day, it is about the safety of, of the city and the firefighters and police and the residents at the end of the day. So, so I'll open it up to a motion in terms of the fine. I think we got a, we've got a very, a resolution that was very narrow scoped in terms of fines. So if we want to address the fines, we can do that. If we want to talk about the enforcement piece, I think we would just have to file another resolution to really kind of bring it back before this, this committee, so.
So would, Counselor Lee? Would that require us to table this right now and then come forward with another resolution?
No, we could either grant, leave, withdraw, or you can make a motion if you want to address the fines, if you feel like we, we want to increase the fines, we can do that. If you don't want to increase the fines, we can just grant leave to withdraw and just file another resolution to talk about the ordinance in totality and not just specifically the fine.
I'll make a motion to increase the fines to $100.
Motion was made by Counselor Kilby to increase the fine from $40 to $100. Is there a second?
I would second that.
Seconded by Counselor Dion. Discussion? Counselor Reposo?
I'm, I'm just curious, because looking at comparable communities, I know Counselor Kilby's point about the handicap parking versus that, but I'm wondering, should we stay within the realm of comparable communities as far as, you know, economics of our people? Is 100, I know we're trying to accomplish at the same time, is it too much? What's a good happy medium to this? And maybe Mrs. Ferreira can address this. How many times has this been increased over the past number of years?
Just two times. It went from 20 to 40.
And when was that?
2008. And then it's stayed at 40.
Since 2008?
It's a long time. Okay. I just, before I recognize, Counselors, you had mentioned the tickets. Were we on par with the number of tickets that were issued for the last storm, we'll call the?
The storm with the 22 inches, the feedback to me was that there was a lot of compliance. So we issued about 700 tickets and we towed 34 vehicles. Usually our first storm, which we did have a first storm, we gave close to 900. So usually our first snowstorm, you know, everybody's relaxed, you know, they get more tickets. Already when we have a second storm, people are in, oh, go out, I've got a ticket, you know, for the first storm, I got to find somewhere to park. So we find that, you know, going out there and tagging becomes less because people are complying with the, with the, with the parking ban.
So roughly anywhere between 700 and 900 tickets are issued? Okay. I'm just going to recognize Counselor Kilby because he made the motion.
Yeah, but just to, to reply to Counselor Reposo's, to, like, the concert, Counselor Reposo's comment. My rationale for that motion, I think if it's increased and people realize the penalty that they're going to have to pay, we're going to seek more compliance.
I yield. Thank you. Counselor Dion?
Yeah, and I would say that my response to that would be, you're not increasing a parking fee, you're not increasing taxes, you're saying if you break the law, there are repercussions, and you'll be held, you'll be held to accountability. You're making a choice. When you don't move your car, you're making a choice to not move it, knowing that you potentially could get a $100 ticket. So I don't feel that you're imposing a heavy or negative burden on anybody. They're making the choice as to whether that happens or not.
As long as they have proper notice by the city, the city has to give out the proper notice, which you have made.
We have.
So we're going to get complaints from people, sir. Thank you. That, you know, I was notified in time, the storm started the next day, stuff like that. I know it's Mother Nature, and it's difficult to predict all these things, but I think that's a big piece of it. The city has to, we're going to do our part to make sure that the residents know and get notice that move your cars at this time or pay the consequences. Thank you.
So, so Counselor Kilby came up with $100, sort of just in conversation here. But I'd hate to vote on something without knowing kind of the nuts and bolts behind what goes into an increase request as, you know, why, why would we come to $100 as that? Is that the sufficient number? Is there a different number that you have in mind? Or is there a calculation that you put together that comes up with a figure for a fine?
I will comment on the 100. It is, it is high. I know the difficulties we have trying to collect the 40. I know the calls that we get. So based on the city of Fall River and, you know, and the, the economy and all that, the 100 will help. Will it help individuals know, hey, if I don't obey the parking ban, it's going to be $100? That's going to be, you know, a hefty fee, and hopefully they. I was thinking more of like the 50, 50 to 70. It is a little high still, but, because you've got to remember, they pay the 100, but if they don't pay this ticket, by the time it reaches the RMV, it's going to be a lot more. So it's not going to be just 100. So there are penalties when they're late. So the first penalty is $15, the second one is another 15. So there's 130. Then there's the RMV fee when he gets flagged at the registry, so you're talking about $150 ticket. And a lot of these people pay it is when he gets flagged at the registry and they forget about it, you know? So that's the only concern that I have.
So your recommendation is to be closer to like 60, 65, 70?
Which we would be, you know, in there, still in the range, like the counselor said, Counselor Reposo said, we would still be in the range of other cities and towns.
Okay. Based on that information, I'd like to make a, I'd like to make an adjustment to the $100 and make it to 65.
There's a motion to amend the motion from 40 to 100 to 65. So a motion to increase the fee, fine to $65 was made by Counselor Lee. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Kilby. Discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, just on the amendment itself. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted, motion carries. So we've got the motion before us, which is $65. Did I cut you off?
It's all right. Yes.
You've, you've got the floor back, sorry.
Yes, but it's okay. But I do think, well, I think that's reasonable. But I do think it should be followed with a resolution that we can make this a full package as opposed to just one piece and not addressing any other issues, so. The other thing as well is, is a date of when you would like to, to start this fee. I'm hoping we don't have any more parking bans. I think we won't get any more snow. One of the things. Blizzard's coming. One of the things, we do have tickets, which, what we're going to do, which we did quite a few years ago when we changed fees, is we will take the 40 and then we will make it into, not handwritten or anything, we'll buy like a sticker that will go on that fee. So when the council become, when you give me, I mean, I know we're going to start it when, you know, winter comes, but I think that there should be a date of when this fee, you know, became into ordinance.
So we would have, so I think just timing wise, I think by the time we get this approved, we're probably outside of the snowstorm because we're, first reading will be the Tuesday, then we'll be two weeks outside of that. And then you got, is it 10, 20 days? 20 days for it to go through, so.
First day of winter.
Yeah. Spring? Oh, you're saying, you're saying to be active. Okay. So if we don't make a motion to have the effectiveness, I think it, even if it goes into effect by the approval, I think will be springtime, so.
And I will need time to, because I've got about three boxes, so we'll need to get all those ready for when winter comes.
And what we can do too is, we were talking about that resolution to look deeper into this, we can kind of do it all together. This way, by the time the winter comes and we talk about parking bans again, it'll all be set in stone, and this way it's very clear to the residents as well.
I yield. Okay. So are we good without amending it any further? Just move forward? So on, on the motion to increase the fine from $40 to $65, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted, motion carries unanimously. Item number five is a discussion, as a resolution discussed the establishment of an ordinance to require any stipend above $2,000 requires city council approval. This was tabled at our last subcommittee meeting on February 8th. I need a motion to.
Motion to lift from the table?
Motion was made by Counselor Dion, seconded by Counselor Kilby. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted, motion carries unanimously. So the city administrator did send out a draft, proposed ordinance for the awarding of a stipend. Sent that to the committee. Hopefully, everybody reviewed it. I do have a couple of questions. Overall, from my standpoint, I think it really did identify what we were discussing at the last meeting, so, but I will open it up for discussion before I ask my questions. Sir? Do you want to?
I don't, I don't have questions right now. I actually appreciated it, but if you want to bring them, I'll, I'll support it.
So if I can just have the administration come down and Mr. Howie, just. Any Counselors have questions? No. So I will just jump in. In terms of, and this is just me being particular and reading words to, you know, get to a point where I think, you know, when we start questioning things, every word has a meaning to itself. So just in terms of the purpose, when we have for the purpose of this section, a stipend shall be defined as, and we get into the definition, a sum of money paid to a non-union city employee. My recommendation would we just remove non-union? Because there could potentially be a situation where we have stipends that are in the CBA, but, you know, there might be some, I guess, additional work that an individual who may be in a union might receive additional stipend for work outside of the union. So I just don't want to have that language in there and then potentially have some workarounds. Or, not suggesting that this may happen, but sometimes the department heads do unionize. So I don't wanna have to then come back down to ordinance and change it because we have department heads who are unions and not suggesting that that's where we're going with that. So that's just one. Number two, which is non-recurring, I guess I just had a question in terms of when we say it's non-recurring. Typically some stipends are reoccurring, so I was trying to get a feel for what we meant by non-recurring.
Sure.
I know it seems simplistic, but, because I think it's self-explanatory, but...
No, it's actually, it's very important.
Yeah.
I would agree a hundred percent that, actually, let me, if I may steal the microphone? Thank you. Is this the one that doesn't work? Yeah, this light is not working. Thank you, I appreciate that, Counselor.
May I address the non-union piece as well?
Yeah.
So part of the definition piece here and why those five components are there really started with a survey of how stipends had been awarded, how, especially in two thousand and eighteen and after, there was an attempt to take stipends that had been part of people's sort of expected work situation and roll them into contracts and memorialize them. So there was no longer either perceived or actual misuse of stipends. And then finally to distinguish between those stipends or allowances that are in CBAs versus those that might be awarded to other non-union or non-affiliated personnel. So I would actually argue that if a union person does work outside of their job description or is asked to do work outside of their job description, I'm not certain that the city would be in a position to award them a stipend without actually triggering a grievance from the union. So the reason why the city sought to limit this to non-union city employees is the idea that all stipends to union employees would actually be reflected in a CBA. Not to say that something can't happen that would maybe necessitate or, not necessitate, make a stipend an appropriate measure. But I think it would be very unusual to pay a single union employee a stipend without bargaining that for all of them.
Yeah, I don't disagree. I guess where I was going, I still see a potential where it could play out, right? And I'm just trying to avoid that. So I guess what I would say is that not everybody is made aware of stipends that are given, right? So you may have a union employee who receives a stipend that the other bargaining unit may not recognize that they're getting a stipend for doing work outside of their, I guess, their scope of, or their job description. So that being said, if you run into a situation where it's, you know, thirty days over a time period, you can make an argument that it's not grievable, right?
That's right.
You knew about it, you didn't file a grievance, you lose your grievance rights within a certain time period, whatever the language, and maybe it's only seven or ten, fifteen days, whatever the CBA states. So I guess I'm trying to avoid something to that effect. So by striking it and then maybe saying with the exception later on of, you know, stipends that are outlined in the collective bargaining agreement, I think might capture that. I'm just trying to make sure that we're not getting into that situation. And then, you know, if somebody, we can do a snow stipend with the snow stipends. I know, I think we rolled those out or they're removed. I know they started originally with just DPW and plowing. But if somebody volunteers their services and then they receive a stipend from that, you know, that might be considered outside of the scope of their job. So that's why, that's the only reason I was trying to, I think, because once you put non-union employees, then it's when we, when something goes wrong, we're having this conversation, we go back to the ordinance. You know, we read the language and it says non-union, right? So then it's like, okay, if you've got a union member, then it's like, okay, we're gonna say we should have probably said just an employee, you know? So that was just where I was going with that.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, and this is really a starting point for the committee to do whatever it wants. I mean, Counselor Kilby raised the very fair point on the last meeting that it just would have been helpful to have a draft ordinance. So I'm not married, and the city's not married to any of this language. It's just, this is a starting point.
Right. No, and I appreciate that. And it's, my nitpicking, and me in particular, is not meant to say that we should have, you know, terrible job. I think it's a great job. I think it captures, again, the spirit of what we're looking for.
With regard to the non-recurring, which was really your first question, I apologize for getting distracted here. The reason we included a non-recurring piece here is that the idea, the intent is for any sort of allowance or stipend that would be a recurring one to be part of an employment contract or part of a CBA. And a snow stipend is actually a very good example of it because although we can anticipate that on an annual basis, certain folks might be entitled to a snow stipend, the payment of that stipend is largely contingent upon snow. So there may be years with nothing and there may be years like this, which, you know, has been kind of an anomaly for this part of Massachusetts. And so the idea that each year it would be assessed and evaluated and if in fact the council decides to have oversight of this particular part of employee benefit or employee payment, it would be on an annual basis. Because essentially, if it's recurring, then the question becomes, once it's awarded, at which point does the council have oversight over its award the next time? Is it the next time the contract comes up? Or is it, should it be annually based upon, you know, just the maybe better practice of having regular oversight of these things? Just again, just a starting point.
Sorry, I'm just trying to think through the non-recurring piece. And I think, again, it comes back to, I think if we can get language in there where it's a catch-all for stipends not included or identified in individual employment contracts or collective bargaining agreements, would apply regardless of non-recurring. And the only one that really kind of, the only example I could give right now to the committee and to you folks at the table are, or is the stipend for custodian tax title. So typically, that was given out, was part of the city administrator's contract. And so if you lose a city administrator and there is no contract in place and you've got somebody filling in, then you've got somebody who potentially would be receiving, you know, maybe call it a ten thousand dollar stipend. And it could be at one time, but then at that point, it wouldn't require council approval because it's not necessarily non-recurring. When does, at what point does it become reoccurring? I guess that's where I would look to define that, if we're gonna keep that.
Can I make a point of clarification?
Yep. Counselor Kilby?
Thank you. I'm looking at the ordinance, first looking at the definitions, then I'm looking at the actual ordinance, which we have to follow, and there's no term reoccurring there. So it's...
But I think once you define it, though.
It's not in the wordage of the actual ordinance, though, is what I'm saying. It's not in it, if you read the...
No, no, right. So I guess what I'm saying is that when we start talking about stipends, we would only be talking about stipends that are non-recurring, based on the definition that was been applied. Do you see what I'm saying?
I think so.
Does that make sense?
So that's how the thing was drafted, which is the idea of first, let's define what a stipend is. And then thereafter, every time we use the word stipend in the ordinance, it means that thing. So that thing being any payment that satisfies the five conditions or whatever the committee decides the conditions are. So I think the conversation is that in a lot of statutes, and actually the public record statute is the greatest example of this in that you have, I think, twenty-six definitions of what actually constitutes a public record. And so even before you actually get to the public records law, which is an entirely different statute, you go to, I think it's chapter seven or chapter three, section seven, and then there are twenty-six subparts. And each of them stands for a potential, what a public record could be. I use those definitions much more than I actually use the public records law itself. So this is, this more stands for the idea that the definition of what the thing is to begin with is as much, perhaps even more important than the rest of the ordinance itself because it at the very least defines the terms of engagement.
I get it.
But it's entirely up to the committee, again, just a starting point.
Counselor Dion?
Yeah, two things. So if we're going to address union and non-union, would the union be a separate line item? Would it be in addition to number one? Or would it be a separate to address that situation? That would be my first question. And then my second, at the last meeting when we discussed this, we discussed the fact that it's potentially possible that someone could receive a stipend less than this, the number, say, of thirty-five hundred. So it would be cumulative as opposed to you're gonna get the stipend all... This makes it sound like the stipend's in one shot and as long as it doesn't exceed this number, it's okay. But we discussed the fact that somebody might do work outside the scope of their duties and only receive, say, a thousand dollar stipend. So they could receive three stipends, two thousand and a fifteen hundred. So it would be cumulative. And I don't see that addressed in here because we did discuss that at the last meeting.
So, and I'd actually like the input of my brother attorney Hayek here, who I think has a lot of really valuable experience with regard to, especially the, just the employment law piece of this. But I would say that if we're gonna address unions separately, I would imagine that we would then begin to have to make a point of having language in every CBA that's negotiated from here on out, indicating that if there's gonna be the award of a stipend that's not applicable to all members or whatever, you know, sub bargaining group might be. Because ask me, it comes to mind, there's a number of different subgroups that are differently situated within that. You know, we got clerks and we have certain mechanics and we have that sort of thing. And it's a little bit different than fire, police and that. So if we were to address the union piece as a separate part of that, that any particular stipend that would be contemplated for an individual who is a union member, that language I think would have to be both in CBA as well as in the ordinance. The second piece is the question of aggregate versus individual. I think the thought was that the non-recurring piece to some extent did address that because now we're not talking about a number of, because I see three scenarios. I see one scenario specific to what you're talking about. One scenario where somebody gets paid a stipend and that's it. Another scenario where somebody, in order to try to work around this rule, gets paid several stipends, less than thirty-five hundred, within a year. And there's that. And then somebody that has a stipend under that amount, but it's recurring over the period of their agreement. If the aggregate ends up being more than thirty-five hundred, is it then applicable? Is, you know, is this applicable to that or is that something else? And I, it's, again, the language doesn't get too deep into any of that because I think the executive obviously, you know, tries to not wade too far into the legislative's purview. And so I wanted to offer a starting point, but not really get too deep in the weeds on this because I think at the end of the day, this committee is going to, it really is the one that has the authority to say what the ordinance should include. So it probably could have been much more comprehensive, but I thought that would actually possibly kind of inhibit the larger conversation about what we want this to do, or I'm sorry, what the committee wants this to do and what the right way to do it is.
Do you have any input, sir?
Sure. Hey, we said something to say if you want to say something. Thank you. First, just going backwards in time to your recommendation, Counselor Kadima. Number one, striking the union employees, I think that makes sense only because it makes it more, I think of Venn diagrams. It makes it a bigger bubble and you include everybody. So it's easier just to include everybody. With regard to your question, Counselor Dion, I think we could probably tweak some of the language to make it collectively not to exceed thirty-five hundred dollars. Obviously, these are based on a fiscal year and I assume that's the intent, not to do three thousand, three thousand, three thousand. So that's just a wording change, that we could simply say stipends in excess collectively, thirty-five hundred dollars. It would be the same, whether it's, if we're gonna do Counselor Kadima's suggestion, striking out non-union, it makes no difference whether somebody's in the bargaining unit or outside the bargaining unit. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. So could we just, I guess also, in that, I'd like to, you know, for the administration's standpoint, really just capture somewhere that it also excludes stipends, that this ordinance would exclude stipends that have been approved and awarded through, you know, obviously individual contract, employment contracts and CBAs. Because that already comes back down, you know, for ratification and that's something that, you know, gets ratified and voted on and negotiated with you folks with the union.
So I think that's in section three. So point three, which prior to its distribution...
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, you're right.
...not described in a CBA, employment contract or contract for services. It's that contemplates, I know that within certain, there are employees that may have side businesses that certain groups within City Hall may, or not within City Hall, but within city government, might contract with them for services. And that shouldn't obviously become a stipend because it's their own business. So that's why that third piece is in there.
No, that's fine. I thought I read it in here, but I went down to the ordinance and I didn't see any ordinance. I didn't realize it was defined.
Newly awarded tries to address the not previously.
Just curious, the thirty-five hundred dollars, would there be an appetite to maybe drop that number? To, because we're, I know Counselor Dion's talking about three thousand, three thousand, three thousand. But now if that is less, then the chances of that happening are a lot less because, I mean, to get a three thousand dollar stipend seems to me a lot for a duty of any nature. So if we bring it down to closer than two thousand, then that may deter that idea of doing pieces.
And the point of information is that the original resolution was two thousand?
Yeah, that's why I'm looking. So how did we get to thirty-five?
So you recall there was a question that was put to me in the last meeting. Do I think two thousand is appropriate? And my sort of gut reaction was, I think it's too low. And that was largely based upon a survey of union and non-union stipends recently. So even if they don't exist anymore, but largely the union ones do and understanding, you know, how much those are. That seemed to be kind of the, sort of, I don't wanna say the average, but it seemed to be a, sort of, the most common range was in that three thousand to thirty-five hundred number. So there just didn't seem to be a lot of stipends in the two thousand range, unless they were like a clothing allowance, which is a very limited, there's only certain groups that would get that because there's requirement for a uniform and that sort of thing. But aside from that, the majority of the stipends seemed to be right in that area. And so that's really where I started from. There's no other math or scientific process other than that.
And Counselor, just having filed the, you know, the resolution back in two thousand nineteen, two thousand was really just an arbitrary number just to get a starting point. So the two thousand number, I know what you asked about the thirty-five hundred, but even the two thousand was really just kind of thrown out there, so.
Fair. I yield, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, would it be appropriate to make a motion to...
Just a, can I, a couple of, I'm almost done. So item number five, where under the definitions, the nature of which work is substantially outside of the employee's job description. So can you just walk me through what your logic was behind that? And I think I know where you're going with it. I guess, anytime you have a job description that says, and has other duties as assigned. So I'm just trying to figure out, and I'm not trying to get a definition for all these words, but I think substantial is another, I guess, word that we would probably need a definition on if we're gonna use substantially.
So just like reasonable in the law, it sort of has a certain meaning and it's supposed to represent the, kind of, the ordinary person. Substantially is another one of those words that is meant to suggest that it's not just the ordinary deviation that life brings in work, but rather something significantly, substantially outside of what the, an employee's expectations might be.
So there is a gauge from a legal definition?
I believe there is, yes. And, you know...
Someone that says shall, may, is that?
Yes, yeah, exactly, that's right. And so that's why I put substantially in there. Yes, yeah, exactly. That's right. And, and so that's why I put substantially in there, as opposed to outside of the job description. Cause I think that to suggest that, um, you know, some small deviation, uh, for, outside of somebody's job entitles them somehow to a stipend, I think would be problematic. However, um, I think one of the, the important pieces here is that, uh, if you have a salaried employee, uh, who, who is an exempt employee, not entitled to overtime, there are certain expectations that employee that may be outside of their job description technically, but that they're expected to do, uh, largely just in support of the overall mission of their department or the division. So the, the idea that, that somebody is working substantially outside of the, the job description, and we can use a different word. I mean, we could, we could suggest, um, you know, something that is even more stark in its contrast and say, which work is, um, uh, not, uh, described, or, or not included, um, you know, by reference or, you know, either specifically or, or, uh, you know, by insinuation or something in the employee's job description. So it's specifically distinguishes one from the other. Substantially outside, I think, from a legal standpoint, would be understood to be, uh, to allow there to be a little bit of leeway in the job description, but not, um, something entirely different than what the person does on a budget basis.
And then just getting into the ordinance, um, so that first line where it says after July first, two thousand twenty-two, a city employee shall not be newly awarded, uh, and paid a, a stipend in excess of thirty-five hundred. And I didn't finish the sentence, but when we say newly, are we, are we, is the intent to try to grandfather folks in, or is it just because this is a new ordinance?
So, so I think there's a practical answer to that, which is that there may be stipends that are, that are existing, um, that have either been part of an employment contract, part of a CBA, I mean, it depends how we're, how broad we're gonna make this ordinance. Um, or that have just been promised and are expected, um, previously. And the question from a practical standpoint is, um, is the committee prepared to review all of those? Is it a wholesale review? And, and if it is, it is. It just, but the, the starting point idea here is that anything that is, that is brand new, uh, might be the, and I'm just guessing, might be what the focus of the committee would be. Because, okay, we're suspicious, um, not suspicious, but we're on guard for, for things that are, um, you know, that are, are new expenses that we're not contemplated previously. So the reason newly awarded is there, um, is, is one, so it doesn't require the, the committee to do some wholesale, person by person, um, review of every stipend. And, uh, there is, there would be an intent, um, to grandfather folks in, um, who have a stipend that has been, uh, awarded previously and has not, um, has not, uh, caused people to, to, you know, to express surprise or dismay at the amount of the stipend or the reason for it.
Yeah, so, so I would be, I guess I'm not opposed to it. I, I guess if the will of the, uh, the committee is, is to accept that, what I would wanna see is, is a, um, time-specific, so we don't have this now, or I expect a mad rush to, to increase stipends. Not saying that that would happen, but, um, say as of January first, whoever's, whoever's, you know, obtaining or has a stipend, is receiving a stipend as of January first, will consider to be either grandfathered or, and then, or will be newly, 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 uh, awarded and paid stipends as of January first. And I throw that, that date out there, trying to get as close to a time period as, as possible, without just saying, okay, now that there's gonna be an ordinance in here, and there's gonna be a new requirement, let's not have department heads rushing forward to say, hey, can I get a, a stipend for X, Y, and Z?
Sure. No, I understand that.
And then my, my last question, and then I'll turn it over to, uh, Counsel Deon, cause I know she had her hand up, uh, was just when you finished that sentence, uh, you know, a stipend in excess of thirty-five hundred without the advice and consent of the city council. So the, the consent of the city councils, what do we mean by advice? Are you, are you looking us, for us to advise you folks on?
So I think consent of the city council requires an up or down vote, whereas advice and consent, to me, uh, gives the city council more room to say, we understand the reason for the stipend, we think the amount is too much, would you consider, uh, lowering that?
Okay.
So it's, it's more of a, it's more of a conversation that I think doesn't, um, totally foreclose the opportunity to award the stipend in the first place, if we think the person is, you know, is doing something...
Negotiation.
Right.
Perfect. Okay, that answered my question. Counsel Deon?
Yeah, I guess, and I could be wrong, but I feel like using the word substantially is subjective in the respect that what I consider to be substantial may not be what you consider to be substantial. So to me, that kind of creates a, um, yeah, a gray area. Thank you. Um, I mean, could we look at it more along the lines of the nature of which work is not defined within the employee's job description? Or work that's not anticipated within the, the employee's job description? Yes, please.
Sorry. Uh, why not just strike number five? In other words, if, if, if it has to go before you, this organization, before the council anyway, why is the council, in essence, limiting itself, um, on this parameter? If, if somehow the department head feels that someone should get a stipend, and it should be five thousand dollars, for whatever reason, uh, let it come down, and it's just your decision.
If it is within the ordinance, that justification and, and documentation has to come with it.
Yeah, now, it was, just so you know, before this came down, I agreed with the wording, but after this dialogue, I have a change of heart.
It's the value of the advice of the city council.
Yeah. I think, um, yeah, I think it is, it's defined in the ordinance. So I, yeah, I, I would agree that, and again, I'm not an attorney, but I'm not, I don't even play one on TV. So, uh, I would agree that that could be stricken as well, that I feel like it is defined within the ordinance. With that, I yield.
Okay. So I think before we, before we have a motion, I, I think we're good with striking number five. So a motion would probably include striking number five.
I would make the motion.
You're looking to get...
No, second.
Cumulif, I, I think we'll just do one total. Um, so you're looking for a cumulif up to, and my, my second question for the, I guess, the committee is, are we staying with the dollar amount of thirty-five hundred? Um, so if it is thirty-five hundred, you, you're looking to get the cum, right? So that it's, somebody gets ten stipends, and they're at thirty-six hundred, that would require them coming back down before us.
So would, would it be cumulative, collective? What would be, or doesn't it matter?
Uh, I think the word is cumulative.
Okay. So yes, so...
Okay. So that, is there any other discussion? I think that...
I think item number one was in progress, and said it's non-union.
Oh, I'm sorry. Good, good point. Right. So all city employees.
So the motion would be to strike non-union from number one, uh, eliminate, strike number five completely, and cumulative up to thirty-five hundred.
Yep.
I would make that motion.
So the only thing, and I, and I wanna clarify for the clerk, so the motion would be just to refer back to, to council, just to draft the, uh, a final ordinance, so we can get it back for review. So this, this is all we're, we're doing on the motions. That's all.
Okay. Can we, instead of tying it up, can we, um, just have that done for our next week's council meeting? Have it introduced on the desks and, and...
Well, I think we would still wanna see it, just to approve it one more, one more time. So...
They could send down a revised...
Right, revised.
...actual ordinance for the committee next time, so you can table this again, have it brought back to the committee.
So can I just get a motion for the change, recommended changes to corporation counsel? Would be assistant corporation counsel.
Motion made.
Would be to, uh, maintain the thirty-five hundred dollars, um, under the definition, strike, uh, the word non-union. Remove item number five, have a cumulif. And... And I missed one. Which one did you say?
Number one, all.
Uh, non-union, striking.
Right, striking that, yep. So we're keeping the amount thirty-five hundred, cumulif, striking number five, and all, all employees, so striking non-union.
Did you want to do something with non-recurring?
Yeah, I, I mean, I would, I would eliminate non-recurring, me personally. That's, I don't know what, how's the committee feel?
It's almost the same rule that applies to, why would you eliminate five? It's gonna come down. We're gonna ask that question if it's recurring and things like that. So I think eliminating it allows the council to actually ask that question and, and move forward with it.
I would add that to the motion.
I yield.
All right. And then eliminating, uh, definition number two as well. Motion was made by Counsel Deon. Is there a second? Second by Counsel Lee. Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed. So vote or motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion to table this item?
Motion.
Motion table was made by Counsel Kilby, seconded by Counsel Reposo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. So vote or motion carries. Item number six is a resolution to discuss, uh, the establishment of an ordinance requiring all collective bargaining agreements include the cost analysis. Was tabled in committee at the last meeting on February eighth, two thousand twenty-two. Is there a motion to lift from the table?
Motion, second.
Motion was made by Counsel Kilby, seconded by Counsel Deon. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. So vote or motion carries unanimously. Uh, also have a proposed draft, uh, ordinance that came down, uh, from the administration. I don't personally have any issues. I think it, uh, highlights everything that I was looking for. Is there any discussion or changes?
John, I'm in agreement. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I, I did look at it as well, and I, I think it's, um, it constitutes the goal, the intent of the resolution.
Okay, so is there a motion to have, uh, council just draft the actual formal ordinance?
Motion.
Motion made by Counsel Kilby, seconded by Counsel Deon. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. So voted. Motion carries unanimously. Item number seven, before we, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Motion to table?
Motion to table was made by Counsel Deon, seconded by Counsel Reposo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. So vote or motion carries. Before I lift the next, uh, item on the table, have you had an opportunity to, uh, review the travel?
So I didn't, I don't think there was a request for council to review the travel, because it was already a proposed, um, policy.
Yeah. So can we just, uh, before we lift it, we won't, we won't take it, can you just review it to make sure it's in line with, I guess, what the administration has in terms of policies and, and recommendations?
Sure.
Cause it came down from a different administration. I just wanna make sure that it's, policies haven't, haven't necessarily changed before we, we entertain it. That's all.
Right. Um, I think largely, the, some of the issues that caused this to be brought forward in the first place are just non-existent within this administration. But I could certainly, uh, and I apologize for delaying...
No, it's okay.
...the committee with regard to that. But, um, uh, but we could certainly look at that and have a, and maybe ask corporation council to give an opinion regarding the policy.
Perfect. Uh, so if the board's good and seeing no business before us, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion still made.
Motion made by Counsel Kilby, seconded by Counsel Lee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. So vote or motion carries unanimously. Committee, I notice, is now apparent. Thank you.